No Dave. Are you?
I'm Phil.
Bad.
Good morning. This meeting of the Berry County Board of Commissioners is called to order. Will you all please stand for our invocation, pledge allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for letting us gather today. We pray for your guidance and, pray that you will give us the patience, the tolerance, and the wisdom to make great decisions for Berry County. Thank you for watching over us. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, our leader is indisposed today, but please bear with me. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Carlton.
President.
Campbell.
Here.
Doster.
President.
Getty.
Here.
Hatfield.
Here.
Smelker.
Here.
Tunisson.
Thank you very much. Item number five, approval of the written agenda. At this time, any member of the board or public may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Any such request? Bearing none, the agenda will be considered approved as written. Reports from state and county officers. Do any state and county officers present wish to deliver an update or report to the board? Seeing none, we'll move into limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Good morning.
Dave, where can?
It's the button.
There we go. All right. Good mor- Good morning. Joel Hibbitson, Rutland Township. I'll start off by, oh, a joke from Ronald Reagan. There was an American and a Russian. They were walking down the sidewalk one day, and the American says to the Russian, "Well, in my country, I can barge through the front doors of the White House, walk into the Oval Office, and slam my fist on the President's desk and say, 'President Reagan, I do not like the way that you are running your country.'" Well, the Russian said, "I can do that, too." The American says, "Oh, really?" He goes, "Yep, I can walk right up to the Kremlin, barge through the front doors, go to the General Secretary's office, slam my fist on his desk, and say, 'Mr. Gorbachev, I do not like the way that President Reagan is running his country.'" This is the difference between countries that have free speech and those that do not. And I probably will go one more public comment on this particular topic because it is very, very dangerous to have political leaders, officials, try to eliminate dissent. Now, to quote Shakespeare, "Something's rotten in the state of Denmark," or so I thought. So I figured, well, I'd Google a little bit to see about this commissioner who continually advocates for limiting free speech. And I came up with a number of things, including some WBCH articles. Here's some quotes from it. In a special meeting, May 4, Southwest Berry County Sewer Water Authority Board opened up the meeting, went into hour and a half closed session with Attorney Scott Dwyer, came out back in open session, voted four to one to eliminate the administrator and project manager positions, thus ending Administrator Mark Doster's employment with the authority. Quoting also the article, charging he was being paid full-time wages for a part-time job. Actually looked up the job description, and certainly enough, it was a part-time job, that somehow or another, he wound up making $58,000 a year plus benefits. Now, some other articles. I found a WWMT News article that was actually quoting Barb Sechi. I loved that lady. She taught me a lot on FOIA requests, where she was questioning $14,000 going to a law firm, $3,000 for cell phones, the $58,000 salary with benefits for a job classified as part-time. No wonder this particular commissioner, Mr. Chair, asked for a raise the very first day that he was here. He also eliminated, from what I understand, several of the meetings and made the office-
Thank you, Joel. If you'll wrap it up, please.
-unavailable to the public.
Thanks. Good morning. Gary White, Berry County. Couple weeks ago, Sharon brought concerns about board appointments. I can't remember if it was questions or what, but I said I did, sitting there. Well, yeah, so after being interviewed last week for a citizen-at-large position, and I knew this, but did not bring it up, it says, "What does the political term 'at-large' mean?" At-large, before noun, at-large, is a description for members of a governing body who are elected or appointed to represent a whole membership or population, notably city, county, in my, it would have been a county. So I said, my concern was when with 35 years of experience, and a lot of it representing county, and that the concern was brought up by another person in the community, how you did what you did last time. I have no ill wills against you, you know, Cynthia Norton didn't, or nothing else. But as I said, the Citizens Advisory, Citizens Correction Advisory Board was looking for a citizen-at-large to represent the population, if you go by the meaning of this. So, just one of those things. As I said, there was also, in a different one, I had talked with Commissioner Smelker beforehand, that there was conflict. We actually ended up hearing that there was two conflicts, but I had not only told him about that, but I also gave him a solution that would have eliminated the conflict completely, but it was never brought up. I was hoping that, well, if you have something that can eliminate a conflict completely, that it would at least be brought up and discussed. But I figured I'd let a commissioner take that on. So it's just one of those things. My concern about not representing the people, the community not being represented, only comes from what has taken place in the past by commissioners here. And I'll talk more about it in the next public comment. But you look at what's going on with the Health Department. They have a paid-for Health Department document survey that documents concerns of citizens of Berry County. This board refuses or does not think enough of the people of Berry County to put that document, the survey, and address those concerns before it's voted on by the Health Department Board. It directly affects Berry County, and you people should, by all, I'll finish up right now, by all means, address those concerns before Berry County Commissioners go there and vote in December on it.
Thank you, Gary.
Good morning, guys.
Morning.
Shirley Lake Irving. I wanted to just remind everyone about Jingle Mingle in December. And I know it's really hard to get out and watch the parade or be in the parade on Saturday, the second. But please, if you aren't in, get lots of candy for the kids. This is such a great time to show our community that we love them all. It's Saturday night, and also we'll be handing out cookies and hot cocoa on Main Street. By, there's like a new gym. I, sorry, Philip, I can't remember what it's called, but go on down and have some fun for everyone. And I haven't been here for a long time, but I have watched some of the interviews for the boards and commissions. And the one thing I was thinking is, sometimes it's nice to have fresh blood. So I know oftentimes it's, you maybe go with the most experienced, and this is not in particular to one position, just sometimes it's nice to have fresh blood. But hopefully, we'll see you all in December with a lot of coats on. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Shelley.
Hello. Charles Hertzler, City of Hastings. How are you all doing today?
Good.
Nice and cool. And now we got snow after everybody's back to work. So anyways, I have an article here. I was just showing it to Mr. Dar over here, and I'm gonna give it to the nice lady from 911, because I can't remember her name, so I'm not gonna try to blotch it. We've seen each other, I mean, so. But anyways, this got to do with the 800 megahertz system. And back when you guys were proposing this and giving money for it from the ARPA money stuff, I raised a concern, because being from Livingston County originally, they have had nothing but issues with their 800 megahertz system. They had to put up booster systems and everything else. This one came out on January 17th of 2023 from Branch County, Michigan, and it goes through and lists all the issues they have been having since they put this system in, and all the additional costs coming through. And I'm gonna give it to her so she can look it over and stuff and maybe be prepared for any concerns that might be coming up and stuff. But the state police radios and the Branch County radios don't come, so they had to buy extra radios and go through all the expense. And we're talking like $8.2 million, just to make this system, and it still don't work, but it's better. Now, you got five towers up and stuff. So I just wanted to let you know that I was gonna give this to her. You guys could maybe be aware of it. The people of the county of Berry should probably know, because like in this report right here, it says they had to raise the cost from 42 cents a line to $2.96 a line to be able to help cover the cost of all this additional that they've encountered with this 800 megahertz system. And it still is not working well. Thank you.
Mr. Hatfield, I'm actually prepared to speak on that, if you would like for me to at some point during this meeting. I'm very well-versed in the Branch County project, and I'm able to answer a lot of those questions.
Thank you. Good to know. Other public comment?
Mike Marlowe, Hope Township. Over the last several months, there's been quite a few that have came before this board, the largest elected board in the county. And we ask that you stand shoulder to shoulder with us on a Second Amendment resolution. And we've heard comments like, "We want to stay in our own lane," and all this stuff. But I think it comes a time when we're talking about our liberties. I do believe it's important that we all stand as one. And I know there's differences on this board. There ain't no doubt about it. Ain't no doubt about it. They don't hold in high regard as our Second Amendment and other liberties as some of us do. And I gotta tell you, there's about maybe three elected officials in this county that I'm inspired by. Rachel, Angela, and Dar. And far as I can tell, the majority is Lansing Country Club. They're afraid to step out and support what a lot of us feel. And our liberties have been heading in the wrong direction of late, and a lot of rhetoric and stuff. And it just don't mean a whole lot to a whole lot of people, but it sure does to a whole lot of us. And I went to Hastings Commission meeting a couple, three weeks ago, and I saw an example of how the importance of the oath of office, when given to that new commissioner, has been minimized. He stood there with his hands clapped like this. He didn't raise his right hand when the oath was being taken to him. And what was really frustrating is the mayor really never interceded on what was being seen by a whole lot of people in that room. And I think it's very unfortunate that in this period of time, there's not more of a sense of urgency. There's been a cissification of a lot of institutions in this country, and I think I'm speaking for a whole lot of other people. We're pretty well-fed up. We're uninspired by what we're not seeing, and that's people standing shoulder to shoulder with us. So I really wish you guys, or some of you, would reconsider standing with us on this Second Amendment resolution. And yeah, well, my time is up.
Thank you, Mike.
John Lake Irving Township, I'll just expound on it a little bit. Because you all failed, and Dave Jackson refuses to bring this up because of outside money, I've decided to take it to each individual township. So far, I've been to seven. One of them, on the very first time I gave the presentation, immediately went to a vote and adopted both resolutions. Those resolutions were deeming that county, or that township, its own individual Second Amendment sanctuary township, and that was Castleton. Since then, Prairieville has agreed to adopt both resolutions. The second resolution is one that is being submitted back to y'all to adopt the original resolution that we put forth back in March, April timeframe, one that which four of y'all voted for. The other one, just approved it, was Irving. I've been to seven. It's a marathon. I can't make all the meetings every night. Some of them, there's three townships a night. But I will be to everyone. So right now, three of the seven townships I've been to have approved both amendments, and I will continue to do that. When you receive those back and you fail to do that, you're failing to do what the people of this town, or this county have asked you to do. Not only the 40 of us plus that came along with Angela Regus on the 18th of April, but now the individual townships are asking you to adopt this resolution. And if you guys haven't paid attention to what's going on in Lansing and seen the bills that have been put forth, the unconstitutional, illegal bills, you need to get on board with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Any other public comment? All right. Thank you all. Moving on, does any commissioner have any correspondence that they would like to share with the board? Seeing none, consent agenda. Commissioner Tunisson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A, approval of the November 14th, 2023 Board of Commissioner Meeting Minutes. Item B, approval of November 21st, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item C, approval to appoint Cynthia Norton to serve on the Berry County Community Corrections Advisory Board in a citizen-at-large position for a three-year term beginning 1/24, expires 12/31/26. Item D, approval to reappoint the following members to serve on the Berry County Community Corrections Advisory Board. David H. Tripp, Criminal Defense Attorney, Representative. Karen Ferrier, Business Community Representative. And to reappoint, Emily Gary, Workforce Investment Board Representative. Greg Garn, Probation Representative. And Amanda Matthews, Service Area Representative for a three-year term that begins 1/24 and expires 12/31/26. Item E, approval to reappoint, to appoint Michelle Deitz, Emily Gary, and Kimberly Miller to serve on the Berry County Commission on Aging Board for a three-year term that begins 1/24 and expires on 12/31/26. Item F, approval to reappoint Jennifer Dewitt to serve on the Berry County Commission on Aging Board for a three-year term that begins 1/1/24, expires 12/31/26. Item G, approval to reappoint Joan Bizard Froeder to serve on the Berry County Conservation Easement Board in a position representing conservation interest for a term that begins January 1st of 24 and ends December 31st of 26. Approval to reappoint Tom Mossen and William Nelson to serve on the Berry County Solid Waste Oversight Committee as general public representatives for three-year terms which begin on 1/1, or, oh, which, yeah, right? 1/1. It says 23. It should be 24, right?
It began 11/1.
Okay. Begin 11/1/23 and ends on, let's see, I lost mine, of December 31st of 26. Item J, or I, approval to attached agreement for remoneration grant administrator services with Andrew Bide LLC, and to appoint Andrew Hartwick as a grant administrator for the Berry County Remonumentation Program effective January 1st of 24. Item J, approve and enter into the 2024 Grant Agreement with the State of Michigan, LARA, for the continuation and remonumentation program in Berry County, and authorize the grant administrator to sign the grant application and agreement on behalf of Berry County. Item K, approval of farmland and open space preservation, also known as PA 116, application number 23-1 for Gerald Lee Mazerick in Section 4 of Castleton Township. Item L, approval of the attached proposal from Advanced Satellite Communications Incorporated to replace three security cameras and a security video storage server at the Berry County Jail. Item M, approval to, for the attached information technology manager service agreement for advanced operational support between Trace 3 and the Berry County, subject to review and the approval by the county's attorney. Item N, approval of the attached proposal with a CDW-G to migrate the county's existing email infrastructure from Microsoft Exchange 2016 to Microsoft Cloud-based platform.
So we have a motion by Tunisson and a support by Smelker for all items listed on the consent agenda. Discussion is not allowed, and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunisson.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10, presentation. We have Rachel Franz, our Recycling Coordinator, with us today to give us an update. So Rachel, welcome.
How's that? Okay. So, good morning. My name is Rachel Franz. I'm the Recycling Coordinator for the county. I report to the Berry County Solid Waste Oversight Committee, or SWAC, as I'll call it from here on. Sorry for the amount of acronyms that I use. I'll try my best to define them as I go. So this is the third year of my contract. These are just some of the metrics to date. So this is since the start of June 2021. I'm not gonna read through all of them, but most, I think most excitingly, is the grant funding that we've received. We did secure, excuse me, another scrap tire grant for 2024 in the amount of $6,000. So that'll be another six trailers. Oh, the blue did not come through. I'm sorry. Normally, you'd be able to read that, and it's just kind of an outline of what the tasks are. So the first of the five main tasks are to provide administrative assistance to the Solid Waste Oversight Committee. There we go. So every year, the SWAC allocates $20,000 annually to the mini-grant program. 50% of those funds are provided from the Solid Waste Oversight Committee, and the other half comes from the community foundation. Mini-grants do have a 33% match, so if the grant total is $6,000, you get $4,000 in grant funds. You have to provide $2,000 in match. Applications are accepted on a rolling basis until all the funds have been distributed. We have yet to have that problem, so if you have any ideas. Information on that is available on the berrycountyriscycles.org website. So there have been three applications since I've started, one in 2022 and two in 2023. You can see the amounts there. The only one, so the one in the middle, Pierce Cedar Creek, is asterisk because those are not final numbers. So the first mini-grant application was from Prairieville Parks and Recreation Department to install a recycling bin for returnable bottles and cans at their Prairie, Gall Lake, Prairieville Township Park. The bin is located near the boat launch, and the idea is to keep those cans and bottles out of the trash as well as out of the waterways. This was a pilot project to see if additional recycling bins at this and other Prairieville parks would be something they want to continue with. The second application was from Pierce Cedar Creek Institute for some compost bays. They would like to, or they are going to install three 175 cubic foot bays to increase the institute's composting capacity, as well as serve as a demonstration site. The third grant was for the Yankee Springs Recycling Committee to provide postage for recycling mailers that were produced through the Eagle Small Communities Grant. This is a grant available to all communities under 10,000 residents, and they provide little mailers, or oops tags, or other type of recycling things. The second task is to work on the county's solid waste management plan, which will soon be called the Material Management Plan. This is kind of the big thing for right now. So I'm not gonna talk too much about the House bills, because I already presented on that. But just to give a quick recap, House bills 4454 through 4461 went into effect back in March of this year. The bills prioritize landfill diversion through reused recycling and composting. With those bills, we will also be eligible for funding once we start the material management process. The funding's kind of exciting. So it'd be $90,000 a year for the first three years, $60,000 for the following two years. So five years of funding, it's about $390,000, I think. And that funding can go towards the planning and implementation of the, of the plan. I have been told from Eagle that the county will receive a letter, letter with a link to a Survey Monkey that will have the notice of intent inside. Let's see, I was supposed to present two weeks ago, and at that point, they said it was going to be that week or the next week. As far as I'm aware, that has still not come to you yet, but they keep telling me soon. So soon you will get that. So once the notice of intent is received, the Board of Commissioners will be the first ones, and you will need to vote and then submit the survey indicating whether or not you accept or reject the role as the County Assurance Agency. It's basically the same role that you play now in regards to the solid waste management plan. If you do reject that title, it will be passed on to the municipalities, so leadership from our townships, villages, and city will be eligible to become the CIA. And if they reject it, then it will go to a regional planning agency. So once the notice of intent is filed, received, you have 180 days to complete all five of these tasks, or whoever is the County Assurance Agency. So whoever decides to be that, they must formally consider the possibility of having a multi-county plan with one or more of the adjacent counties. I have already had discussions with all of our adjacent counties excluding Kalamazoo. I did reach out to Eagle and ask if that would be suitable, so that you guys don't have to do that, or whoever becomes the CIA, and I have yet to hear back. I know they're getting a lot of questions right now, so hopefully I get that answer soon. Once the CIA is established, that body will appoint the Designated Planning Agency, or DPA, and the Material Management Planning Committee. So the Designated Planning Agency is the entity that will be responsible for actually putting the plan on paper. The Material Management Planning Committee is responsible for kind of coming up with the ideas, having the meetings, and telling the DPA what to put in the plan. the ideas, having the meetings, and telling the DPA what to put in the plan. Just to go over what that planning committee is made up of, it is going to be a permanent committee who will be made up of 11 to 12 members. Not all members have to reside in the county, but they do have to work in the county, for example, a material recovery facility, or a MRF, that's a recycling center, we don't have one in the county, but we have to have a member that represents such a place, so that would be someone from outside the county.
Did you state that, I'm sorry to interrupt, that there was a possibility of there being a smaller committee available?
Yes, at one time during one of the many webinars they've given me, there was a slide on a smaller committee, I think we might have to apply for it, I don't have the exact information on that, I can get that to you guys, but it would be a seven-person committee as opposed to 11. Any other questions on that?
No, thank you.
So, the planning committee meetings will be open to the public, just like any other meeting, meeting information will be available on the website, and the draft material management plan will be available to the, for public review and comment for a minimum of 60 days with a public hearing, and will require a two-thirds municipal vote. So, once whoever CAA is files the notice of intent, that will start the 36-month clock until the material management plan has to be submitted to Eagle. So, the Designated Planning Agency will be responsible for putting together the work plan, and then that has to get approved by the planning committee and the CAA, then it gets approved by Eagle, so then we're eligible for the grant funding. So, I am recommending that the existing Solid Waste Oversight Committee become the DPA or the Designated Planning Committee or Agency, so if you all decide to be the CAA, you would need to appoint the DPA and the planning committee. So, the planning committee, I think, from what I understand, will be just like any other committee where they apply and you have interviews. So, hopefully, yeah, we can try to do a smaller committee, that would be less work, but we'll So, yeah, I am recommending that the SWAC be the DPA, and then the recycling coordinator, whether it's me, or it'll probably still be me, be the main point person for Eagle. I do want to quickly go over, I stole this from Eagle, what would happen if we decide, because we do have the option to not do any of that, we could say, no, we don't want to do it, and then Eagle will write a plan for us, but if they do write our plan, they can include other counties to be on a multi-county plan, they will not allow for additional landfill capacity, and the Board of Commissioners will still be responsible for implementing the plan. So, that's just the what-if.
Could I, so, if the state, if we don't select our own jurisdiction over this, then the state would then require that there's no additional expansion of the landfill?
Correct. We do already have two cells permitted, though, so, we're good for our landfill right now. It does also limit, and I believe eliminate, outside waste from coming in. So, we already, our landfill didn't take out-of-state waste, but they do take out-of-county, and I think that may still apply, but we will never be able to take out-of-state, from what I understand.
And the grant was for approximately $90,000 for the first three years, is that?
Yes, yep.
And then, and then it lowers after that?
Yeah, then it's $60,000 for the following two years, so it's a total of five years, because that's all you have to write the plan anyways. But it could be used to, we could put in new drop-off sites, or really whatever, we could build a MRF, I don't think we should, but we could, sky's the limit. So, next task is the Household Hazardous Waste Event, I'm hoping, can you, there should be a play button at the bottom, this is just a recap of what happens at Household Hazardous Waste Event, hopefully it works, if it doesn't work, you can see it on the website, but at our Household Hazardous Waste Events, we collect household hazardous waste, obviously, cleaners, batteries, lights, tires, electronics. Here we go. Sorry, there's no sound, it's just music, anyway. So, this is a really fun event, we had it in June this year, which was a little later than we like to have it, but a lot of good people come out to help, the football team from TK helped with tires, that was really nice.
You make the people move extremely fast.
I did, because you got to make a video, under, it's got to be less than a minute, So, this year, for 2023, we collected over 45,000 pounds of household hazardous waste. In addition, we also collected 30,000 pounds of electronics, for a total of 75,916 pounds. Additionally, we collected over 4,500 tires, which was provided at no cost residence, and has been for many years, thanks to that scrap tire grant. So, this year's electronics collections were sponsored in part by the Eagle Rule Electronics Recycling Grant, so in addition to the two regular events we have at the Household Hazardous Waste, we had one additional at the Village of Nashville Transfer Station. Next year, we'll continue with these electronics, we'll have one at each of the Household Hazardous Waste, and then we will have an additional one kind of in-between June 1st at Dalton College High School, and these, that one is open to anyone, anywhere. It is a $16,000 grant, but it only pays for CRTs and LCD TVs and monitors, so this year, we only spent $3,700, so I really need more TVs, big TVs, the bigger the better, go to your grandma's basement and get them all, bring them to me, because I need to spend this money. If I don't spend the money next year, they did tell me that I could extend, expend it, extend it for another year, so, it could go to 2025, we'll see how that goes. So disappointing. We did ask a suggested $10 donation for CRT and LCD TVs and monitors to keep it sustainable, because only two of the three events are covered by the grant, but no one was turned away. If there was no, if you didn't have any money, we didn't want to discourage anyone, it's just a suggestion. So, of the 30,000 pounds of electronics we collected, 59% or 17,000 pounds were TVs. I'd like to give a quick shout-out to all of our amazing volunteers this year, and our residents for bringing us so many interesting and heavy electronics. Commissioner Carlton, thank you for bringing us a much-needed dolly in Nashville, that was, couldn't have done it without you. Commissioner Getty, thank you for helping the last two years physically and in planning, and Commissioner Doster, thank you for helping plan and serve on the committee. We are always thankful for anyone who takes the time to help and volunteer, even in just planning, so if you would like to do that in the future, let me or Frank know, we'd be happy to let you in on our fun time. Most of my time is spent on outreach and education, which is what it would say right there. So, I give public presentations, I write columns in the reminder, I respond through the website and social media accounts, we just got an Instagram, I'm trying to make more reels, I'm not very good at it, but I'm doing it. And then we also produce outreach materials, such as the Recycling and Disposal Guide. So, this is our new version of the Recycling and Disposal Guide, I have a few copies available here on the table, if anybody wants any. The QR code on the back is linked to the most up-to-date digital version of that PDF. In addition, we have a little searchable database, so if you go to the page on the website, you can search in that little bar there, whatever you're looking to recycle, oil, and then it will display anything that comes up with the word "oil" in it, and show you those locations, as well as contact information. You can also just scroll down and search by category. This information is also available in a map, so this one's a little bit different, you could actually put your address in, and it will highlight your location, and then tell you what recycling haulers or drop-off locations you have, in addition to the drop-off sites that are listed elsewhere. So, in June, I posted a survey for residents to provide information about current recycling practices, and how they would like to see Berry County's material management programs change in the future. If you have not yet filled out that survey, you can scan the code, or just go to berrycountyrecycles.org and complete that. I can also make some paper surveys, if that's what you want. Of the 134 respondents so far, almost all localities have been represented, half of the respondents stated that they do not have access to curbs, or that they do have access to curbside, however, only 32% of those use it. When I asked about barriers to recycling, the majority of respondents indicated that it was the availability of service, as well as the cost that's prohibiting them, among a lot of other interesting feedback. The overwhelming majority of people who took the survey were in support of a community bulk waste collection day, similar to the spring cleanup and dumpster days, I think it's dumpster days, in Middleville and Nashville respectively. When I did live in Middleville, that was probably my favorite thing to do, is put my stuff out and watch people come by and take whatever, it was always just very interesting to me what people decided to take. But it did appear that the community is not at all interested in any additional compost drop-off sites for yard waste and food waste, and I thought that was kind of interesting, but just good to know. So, I intentionally made these questions vague as far as cost, just to see how people would respond. 85% said they would be in support of a county-run dual-curbside recycling program, so following that question, I asked if they would support a subscription-based or opt-in curbside program, which clearly indicates a cost. 41% said yes, and 50% said maybe, depending on the cost, so that's 91% generally in favor, with some cost indicated. So, that's kind of something that would need a lot more research, just because people have said cost is a barrier. Following that, I asked about a mobile recycling unit, which I've talked about numerous times. It'd be similar to that of Calhoun County, they have scheduled drop-off days throughout the county, we would focus it in areas that have no access to recycling, I'm thinking specifically of the Syria Township. So, 58% said they would be in support, I asked how much they would be willing to pay, results were very mixed, but 62% were willing to pay between $15 and $50 a year, which comes to be $1.25 to $4 a month. This is something I am going to go out for a grant for, hopefully in January. Final task is to assist local units of government with their material management goals, so I'm available to all municipalities to assist in new programs, or if they need publicity help with their existing programs, whenever they give me information, I add it to our recycling database, things like that, so I'm always available to them. Looking to the remainder of my contract period, which ends in the end of May, I'll be focusing on mostly the material management planning, will be the big thing, so getting that notice, hopefully just helping you guys along with the notice of intent when it eventually comes, and then helping as the DPA and working with the Material Management Planning Committee. I will also work on securing more funds for grants for the scrap tire collection, the MMP, and the mobile recycling unit. And finally, I will continue outreach and education to help people find resources to recycling right and use less. With that, thank you very much for allowing me to present, sorry it was so long, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Chris Getty and I both serve on the committee, do you have any other comments you'd like to make?
Just that the, the presentation came through clear in our paperwork, so you know, because I know that was bothering you, I'm not sure what the translation was with the monitor, but the slides were really helpful, thank you.
Other commissioner questions?
I got one. So, what is the duration on the, on the landfill for, before it would be unusable?
The two current cells, I believe, they told me they have another 30 years capacity, and if we start recycling more and throwing away less, it'll be even longer, so.
Well, do you see a path forward with, Berry County-wide recycling? Do you see a path, I mean?
I don't know about county-wide, but I did speak with Granger last week about maybe working on that mobile recycling unit, as well as more drop-off sites. So, in my eyes, as long as we all have access, I don't know if we'll have curbside for all, just because of the, the rurality of our county, it's hard for trucks to, you know, if only one person recycles on a street, they have, it's just not economical for them.
What's their, what was their response, Granger's?
They were very helpful, he's, really wants to do anything they can to help, so I will be working with them closely on this, and I believe they will be applying for a position on the planning committee. I think Waste Management is too, though, so.
Well, you know, like what's going on with Hastings Township, where they had their recycling center, but they don't want to get in there and get the bins out.
So, it's a little more complicated than that, it's more that they're sordid recycling, and it's the only sordid recycling in the county, so for Granger to send out five trucks to one location is just not going to happen. So, they did tell me, though, if they had multiple sites like that, they would be more willing to consider the idea of servicing them, but it, to just come out for one bin of metal is not economical.
Right, that makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
Just to make a comment, that where I live, Gun Plains Township's right across the street where my parents live, they've had curbside recycling for quite a substantial period of time, more than 20 years, it's been very successful there, they have a lot of participation. I attempted, when I was supervisor of Prairieville, to do an assessment on each house for, I think it was, at that time, it was like $28 a year for curbside recycling, and I couldn't get the board to do it, but that would have been a deal at this point, but.
Yeah, Prairieville does have a really good drop-off program, but it's still, it's only on Saturdays, and that's not.
They would get a lot more participation, though, if it were curbside.
Oh, I know, as a curbside recipient, I have, I live in the city, so I'm eligible for free recycling at Waste Management, but I can almost guarantee I wouldn't do nearly as much recycling if that was my only option. Having curbside is really, you know, convenience is king, and it always will be, so.
Commissioner Carlton?
I got to observe two of your events, the one in Nashville, and then the one at the fairgrounds, very impressed, how do you get so many volunteers?
Well, I, the Berry Conservation District, we provides volunteers, so that's the, where I actually work, so we have five, six staff, and then our, and our CS partners also occasionally help, I call in my husband, that was the big guy with the big TV there, he's a big help. But, yeah, and then the TK football team, actually, at the end of the September event, four of them, all of our, our big helpful people had left, and we were all pretty tired, so four other football players came over to help us with the last remaining large TVs, so it's a lot of shared volunteerism, but I, really, I just got lucky.
So, with the tires, what I was doing, when I see tires, a lot of people abandon old tires in the alleys off Main Street in Nashville, and I pick them up and throw them into a garage and wait for such an event, because it costs, I don't know, like 10 bucks or something to actually take it.
Yeah, they're like, I think at the transfer station, it's $4 or $5 a tire, but it's.
Yeah, so it's, it's really helpful, because a lot of people will not pay to give it a tire, so they'll come up to the alleys off Main Street and kind of dump them behind different buildings, so, it's really helpful, you know, so just, to have a place where we can take them at, at no cost. How many tire events do you have a year?
Just two.
Just two.
Yep, both at the fairgrounds.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yep. So, I saw a question over here, can I take that?
Back home in San Diego, they had for can recycling, where you would take a trash bag full, and they would weigh it and, and pay you, because I think a lot of people don't like going to the machines, is that something that's ever been talked about, or does it exist out here anywhere?
I've never seen it out here, I personally give my cans, there's a woman, Wendy, who collects them for good causes, and I just, oh, yeah, I just bring them to you, I'm sorry, you have, oh, oh, okay, I was going to say, you don't look like her, but, yeah, that's what I do. When I lived in Middleville, I would wait for the high school or middle school students to come by and ask for donations, but I, I worked in a bottle room, and I'll never, if I don't have to go back, I will never go back, but that would be something, I wonder if maybe Paddo's does something like that? That's the only thing that I would think of, is scrap metal yards might, yeah.
And then, question, we had, I farm, and someone literally dumped a semi-load of tires in one of the fields that I farm, and I know that the limit at the fairgrounds is 10, and it would take me probably 50 years to take them all in at that point, is there a place or an exception that could be for an instance like that?
So, the 10 tire per vehicle is an M. outlaw, it's not us, you could, if you want to bring them. You could, if you want to bring them to us, you could have some friends get them. Otherwise, Eagle does have a individual scrap tire grant, where they will, you apply to them directly, and they will come to there and collect them, or I don't know exactly how it works, if you have to maybe put them in the trailer, but Eagle does have grants for that specifically. But as far as at the fairgrounds, we just go by the M.D. law, but you can bring as many, you know, as long as they're not business tires. That's the very big specification, is it has to be residential, so, but I'm sorry that happened to you. Anybody else?
Rachel, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very interesting. Public hearings, we have none. Items for consideration. Commissioner Smelker?
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of transfers and disbursements, approval of claims in the amount of one hundred thousand, five dollars and seven cents.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Discussion? All in favor? Excuse me. Roll call vote?
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Guedi?
Aye.
Jack, or, I'm sorry, Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-three dash...
Carlton?
Yeah.
Aye.
Carlton, I'm sorry, yes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-six, resolution to approve ballot proposal for renewal of countywide E-91 Emergency Answering and Central Dispatch System.
Support. Campbell?
We have a motion in support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Doster?
Aye.
Guedi?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ready? Approval of Budget Amendment twenty-three dash B.
Support. Campbell?
Support. Discussion? Here?
Yeah, I watched the video, and I would like to see that the commissioners put, amend the resolution, just like what the COA has a building fund. You have five point six two four one oh eight going into a fund, I don't remember what the name of it is, but I think it just needs to be the Build a Jail Fund. The jail has been in need for about seventeen years now. Five point six plus million dollars is still about thirty million dollars short, and you can do that without coming after a millage, but you need to actually put this into a building fund specified for the jail, so that, it disturbed me that before the discussion opened up, that Chairman Jackson was saying, "But we don't have to use it for a jail," before he even got started in discussion with the other people. But the jail has been a seventeen-year need, or brought up. Why wouldn't you put the building money in there and lock it in to the best so that there's, oh, it's not just a fund we can draw money out of? The other thing that bothered me was, in that discussion on this, was Commissioner Doster's asking the commission to act as if a township or another municipality had applied during the first round of ARPA. That, to me, is ethically challenged, that that would even be considered or asked. So I just am amazed that it was even brought up. It's a politician asking for false statements to get money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Commissioner trumps me, so I was just gonna say, would you like me to, but I'll be happy to address the comment about where the funds end up, if you'd like, but I can do that after...
I'd like to hear it.
I can go now, or you want me to answer that real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So on page eleven of the budget amendment document itself, Special Revenue Funds section, you'll notice on the left toward the top, in fact, it's the second line down, Fund Number four sixty-six, it's a new fund. It is a, the four hundred series identifies it as a construction fund. So in the chart of accounts, it's a newly created construction fund. I titled it Public Safety Complex Construction Fund. It could be titled Sheriff's Department and Jail Construction Fund, it, whatever we want it to be, but suffice it that that is for a sheriff's department and jail. And you'll notice that the revenues reflected for 2023 would be five point six million, just a little over that. So the funds that were referenced will actually go into a construction fund for a public safety complex. So the question, I think, that was asked maybe by the chairman is, those funds would then be restricted, if you may, for that purpose. However, the board always has the ability, for example, if a grant were to come along at some point, or if a project were to be put together in the future that didn't require the entire five point six million dollars, however that might play together, you've got grant funds or something, and those funds can be transferred back out of that construction fund, and used then for something else, because they have come from the general fund. Getting a bit into the weeds, I apologize for that, but I think the bigger question or bigger comment was, where do those funds end up? And that five point six two four million will be placed in a construction fund dedicated for the construction of a public safety complex.
Commissioner Doster, do you have a comment?
Yes. I approached the subject once before, but I just want to reiterate it. I think that before we get to the point of committing to the construction of a jail, we need to do some due diligence to make sure that there isn't something, other possibility that might be cheaper or work as well. These jails are, you know, everybody's jail is, you know, at half-capacity, and maybe looking to consolidate some jails would be something worth looking into. That may not have been economically feasible in the past, but I think the things have changed significantly. Our courts are not going to be committing as many people to the jail system. In the long run, I don't see us returning to a hundred people incarcerated. There are so many other diversionary programs that we use today, that there are better ways to ensure that somebody doesn't recommit and can reengage in real life and being productive again. And so I would, I'm glad to hear that this, even though the funds are going to go into this jail complex, that they could be used at some other point by the discretion of the board for other purposes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Point's well taken, but this is far from approving any project, so it's acknowledgement of an issue that will, I think, involve a lot more discussion, debate, planning before anything actually gets specifically committed, but your point's very well taken. Any other questions or comments?
But the wording is for Corrections Complex, jail, whatever.
That is correct. The plan at this point is that, and I guess the point is, ultimately it's your decision, but is to, we've identified that the sheriff's department and office in jail is a facility that's aged, it's beyond its useful life. We continue to keep it operational, but that something needs to be done, and this is, and there's two parts to it, right? There's the funding that goes along with it, and then there is the, to Commissioner Doster and Commissioner Hatfield's comment, the, how do you tackle that? We are always gonna need a facility to operate our sheriff's department out of, and we're going to need some level of facility to house inmates. So we haven't decided, of course, there continues to be debate about, and that seems to be changing, with sentencing practice, on what size of a facility we might need. But this begins to get funding available, in hopes that as those, that conversation goes on, we continue to put what funds we can in a fund to address that issue, so...
I got one more question, Michael. Is it each county's duty to provide a jail, or...
It is.
Each county individually?
It is. You do have to correct, and the sheriff would certainly know more about that, but yes, we have an obligation to provide for the custody, control, and safety, if you may, of inmates that are arrested and that are then convicted in our county. Commissioner Colton, and I digress for a minute, but Commissioner Colton had asked the question, are there any counties out there that don't have a jail? And again, the sheriff may, I have to put him on the spot, may know this more precisely than I. In my discussion, in my query of my peers, I'm only aware of one county, I think it's Leland, a really small county, that doesn't have its own jail. Now, I could even be wrong there, but there weren't anybody in this, in the discussions I had that said, oh, yeah, there are multiple counties that don't have a jail. All counties have one. It's a matter of the size, that some of them might have a lockup, but you would, if you didn't have enough, you'd have, you'd be obligated to rent beds. We've talked a little bit about that, making sure that if our facility went down, we have an obligation to, we don't control the courts and their sentencing practices, so we have to be prepared to provide a level of incarceration. Have I even come close to approaching that correctly? There is a case out there, it's Wayne County inmates versus Wayne County, and Wayne County lost a case, the inmates, basically a judge says, you, the commissioner sat back and let the jail go for so long, judge said, well, fine, I'll spend the money for you, basically, and made them build a new jail, and that the law says that each county has to have a safe and suitable jail.
Thank you, both of you. Any other questions? No, we'll have roll call vote.
Doster?
Aye.
Guedi?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. We have no unfinished business, we have no new business. County administrators report. Michael?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Chairperson's report, I have nothing. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Doster?
I have nothing.
Back to the MacArthur Drain in Woodland I was talking about. So Jim Dahl, our drain commissioner, came out to the townships and explained everything very well in a way that I could not explain, and he will be coming to the village of Woodland, that was the township, so we got a Woodland village. I keep having to explain this to my wife. She says, "You were just there yesterday." You know, so I'm like, they're two different things, I didn't forget. So December eleventh, the drain commissioner, Jim Dahl, is gonna come out and further explain it to the village. Also, I want to mention, over in Nashville, the Nashville Community Park has received two grants, thanks to Catherine Guedi, and the first grant was for seven thousand dollars from the community foundation, to get it started with sheds, hoses, you know, wheelbarrows, you know, whatever is needed, and the second one was from Farm Bureau for six hundred dollars for soil. So really excited about that, and thank you, Catherine.
Thank you. Commissioner Guedi?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Smelker?
I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Tunisin?
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
I visited CAA last night, and we didn't have a quorum, so I'll visit CAA again on Monday. And also tomorrow, I'll visit DHS in Thornapple Manor. That's all I have.
Excellent. And I have nothing else to record. So we'll move on to limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to
Joel, it's in Rutland Township again. There was a man by the name of Luther Baldwin, and he was in the Continental Army under President Washington, well, soon to be President Washington at the time, and he was convicted of the Sedition Act. Now, the president at the time was John Adams, and he was a rather large man, many people referred to as his rotundancy, and he signed into law the Sedition Act, which Luther Baldwin was unfortunately charged with. Now, John Adams was traveling through the town that Luther lived in, and unfortunately, the tavern had been open for quite some time, and everyone was about half-lit. And when President finally came through town, they had assembled sixteen cannons to give him a sixteen-gun salute. Well, everyone was drunk, they couldn't get the cannons fired on time, and when they finally did fire them, it looked like they were shooting at President Adams, to which Luther Baldwin said, "I don't care if they shoot at him right through his fat ass." He was convicted under the Sedition Act, charged several years' worth of wages, as well as imprisoned until he could pay for it. Well, the man running for president at the time was Thomas Jefferson. Ironically, the Sedition Act, as Adams signed it, made it illegal to talk smack about him, but you could respectively, for the time that it was signed, talk smack about his political opponents. So this became quite a pivotal argument during President, well, soon to be President Jefferson's campaign, and so you might be able to say that if it wasn't a drunk at a bar, we wouldn't have a President Thomas Jefferson. Another example about how free speech absolutely has to be permitted, allowed, and encouraged in our country. Now, obviously, yes, speech does have consequences, both good and bad. If I say something that isn't true, then I could be, or write it down, I could be charged with slander or libel, but Luther Baldwin didn't say anything that wasn't true. So with that said, Collette Scrimger is a liar. Thank you.
So the jail is back. There's actually a little bit of funding now in place for it. What there is nothing at this point in time is commissioners taking any action to address the jail need. So is this gonna be dropped on the chairman to say, this is how we're gonna do it? Is it going to be an agenda item as to how to get this thing addressed? Seventeen years of the can getting kicked down the road is about enough, isn't it? So the first thing you did was you finally put a little bit of funding. The next thing is, what's it gonna cost? What do you need? But at this point in time, your chairman says not till next spring. Well, it's almost next year. Well, it's almost next year. You know, earlier I read at large, you're commissioners at large, you're supposed to represent the population. The last commission didn't do it very well with the Health Department. Over two hundred and fifty people, I believe, filled the courthouse for the commissioners that sit here, one's missing today, listened and did nothing. When it went to the Health Department, four or five hundred people showed up there, where the Health Board did nothing. You have a document paid for by the taxpayers, a survey for a strategic plan that commissioners at large are not wanting to address the community concerns in a public meeting. For Berry County, that means the Berry County Commissioners as a whole body should be addressing this before it comes up for a vote in December. It's easy to be an elected official when you take your role and responsibility to represent the people and the population a lot better than saying, geez, I have my own personal feelings and wants, I'm not gonna discuss nothing in public, we'll do it behind closed doors and come in, you know, with a consensus, you know, but not have it to where the public can hear what you're saying. The Building Ad Hoc Committee in general is what's been going on there. I was gonna address the not growing larger government for Berry County, but the Health Department put on seven positions. Six funded by the federal government, one funded by the taxpayers, of local taxpayers. So, yeah, is government growing in Berry County? Yeah, that's the reason you got a nine hundred, ninety-one hundred square foot facility that you guys wanna dump money into. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Good morning. Stephanie Lehman, I'm the nine-one-one director here in Berry County, also a resident of Yankee Springs Township. I would like to say thank you for your approval this morning of our ballot recommendation for our funding mechanism. Mr. Hertzler, I think that you and I need to schedule a time to talk, because three minutes isn't gonna cut the explanation that I have for you. I would like to note that this article that you presented was published on January seventeenth of twenty twenty-three, so about eleven months outdated. The first lieutenant that's referenced in this article is First Lieutenant Barry Schrader. For those of you who don't know, he trooped here in Berry County when he was a young trooper, so I know Lieutenant Schrader very well. I'm happy to reach out and have a conversation with him. What's super important for this board to understand is that when we determine that we were gonna be building these two out of the six that we need, seven and eight hundred megahertz towers, we will be integrating them into the MPSCS, the Michigan Public Safety Communication System. They will support, maintain them, they will remediate them. About every ten years, the state goes through a multimillion dollar project of updating equipment, and if you are integrated into their system, your towers are upgraded as well. I don't hold an engineering degree, we are not radio technicians, we don't have the manpower and the resources here in Berry County to handle those things locally. What's different with the Branch County project is they did not do that. They did not have the MPSCS involved in their project early on. Motorola did not build their towers. They have a Kenwood system that was built by a company called J and K, and I'm not here to disparage Branch County or my counterparts in Branch County. Every community has different needs. The MPSCS has very stringent guidelines of how your infrastructure has to be built before it can be integrated into their system. The infrastructure in Branch County does not meet those standards, so it is not an option. The state police operates solely on the MPSCS, and so that creates an interoperability issue. Interoperability issue in Branch County is not only with the Michigan State Police, it's also with their surrounding communities. So if we have an issue where we have something that's coming in or headed to Calhoun County, my dispatcher's head a tab, they go to their primary channel, and they can speak directly with Calhoun County's nine-one-one center. That can't happen there without something called a patch. From an interoperability standpoint and from a best practices standpoint, for lack of a more professional way to say it, it's a nightmare. It's software in the radio system that short-term patches those two things together. Branch County does have better coverage, seven million dollars on six towers. I did have a conversation with MPSCS and Robert Swick, their director, and they are not going back to VHF. There's some lack of information that they're going back to VHF. There are a lot of differences between Kenwood equipment and Motorola equipment, and it goes beyond just looking at what's presented to you on a spec sheet. There are some difference in the receive mechanism, so all radios transmit and receive, between Motorola and Kenwood, and it has to do with some differences in power, differences in antenna, and if you are in a community where you don't have a lot of infrastructure or you're on a fringe, which let's face it, our whole community is, it doesn't work as well. So I'm happy to have a conversation with you whenever you'd like to schedule that, but I just wanted the opportunity to come up and talk about that, so thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the information. Other public comment?
Mike Marlowe, Hope Township. Just to kind of finish up what this conversation was earlier about the Second Amendment, I think comments have been made, well, it doesn't have any teeth. I think a way of considering that resolution would be that it represents an explanation point of the sentence, shall not be infringed. And I think with all the counties, a coalition of all these counties, sending that message to Lansing, I don't know, maybe they won't be too impressed by it or not, but irregardless, I do believe that it means what it says, it's an explanation point, shall not be infringed, and there should be every safeguard and every argument to see to it that things that are hatched in Lansing don't come to fruition. And I do believe that the resolution may represent also that we are entrusting our sheriff, in which he deserves that trust, because he's got a proven record, that he is a constitutional sheriff, and that he does make the correct calls when it comes to this, and for example, the COVID thing, when rights were being somewhat imposed, or lack of our rights were being imposed on us by kind of a tyrannical situation from Lansing. But anyway, I wish you guys would reconsider, I know everybody on this board isn't all for that, but some of yous, I think you would serve a whole lot of residents in this county well by sounding off in a way in which at least the commission would be saying yea or nay, one way or the other, and those that don't agree with it, oh, well, you know? That's all I got to say about that.
Thank you very much, Mike. Other comments?
Hello, Shelley Lake again. I just wanted to address, really, John, but all of you, you're our commissioner, and I love how you talk to us about what we want, what we need and what we want. You come to our township meetings and find out what we really want, even though it may not be something that you agree with, if it's the general population of your township. So I think sometimes it's easy to see this board as a whole, as a team, you're really not, you're not a team at all. Gosh, that sounds bad, but you're each are responsible for your own people in your township. So I would just, if you don't, encourage you all to get out and reach out and ask your people, how do you feel about this? What, you know, what do you want, what do you need? So, thank you, John.
Other comments? Thank you very much. Other business, we have non-commissioner comments. Commissioner Susanson?
It was brought to my attention that I did misspeak last week, so, about the renewals, the nine-one-one will increase some, from point nine-six to one. I said they're all gonna be just renewals, so I didn't wanna make that clarification, but I'll just get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce?
Hastings Parade on Saturday.
Can be horses there? No, no. Commissioner Doster?
I have nothing further.
Okay.
Nope, thank you.
Ben? John?
I want to address something that Gary brought up on the conflict of interest on one of our participants. He did bring it up to me, I brought it up in the meeting, I asked her about the conflict interest, she said yes, and she said she would abstain. And to me, you left the impression that I did nothing. And if you have a conflict of interest, even on this board, and you abstain, I don't think we can ask anything more of that person. I don't believe that you said it correctly up there.
I said, I gave you an option to have.
Gary, you're out of board. All right. Any other comments? If not, we have motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Support?
Motion support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?